I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's a special meeting here for the county commissioners and the public. At this time, I will turn it over to our Vice Chair, Mr. Pope, for the invitation and pledge of allegiance.
I would like to invite Commissioner Crumpler to please lead us in the invocation. Following, I'd ask Commissioner Godwin if he would to give us the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
All those who are willing, please join with me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. Lord God, please be with us this night as we hear the public's comments as we prepare for our budget. Please help us commissioners to have the wisdom to know what is right and to discern what is wrong, for we ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
Let us pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll give you the chairman's statement. In accordance with the North Carolina Journal, statute 159, 12b, Sampson County government is holding a public hearing, during which time any person who wishes to be heard on the budget may appear. Each speaker will have three minutes at the podium to address the board. The Board of Commissioners do not intend to make any decisions on the budget this evening. Rather, this meeting will be recessed to allow for further time to consider all information. I will ask that the clerk to the board come call the names of those who have signed up to speak.
Yes, sir. Before we open the public hearing, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, I am sorry. I jumped too fast on you. I need an approval. I did that last time, I think. I'm getting good at that. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you all. Thank you for setting me straight. I appreciate that.
And we'll need a motion to open a public hearing.
Now, we will move forward and to open the public hearing, to have a motion to open the public hearing.
Same move.
Second.
All in favor? Motion so carried. Public hearing is now open.
Before we start with the individuals who have signed up to speak tonight, I wanted to give you a report on the written comments that we've received to date via email and mail. We've had thirty-three total written comments, and they can be broken down as follows. Thirteen for the animal shelter, fourteen for the Sampson County History Museum, six for the library system, three that were general budget comments, two were in favor of tax increases to prevent loss of services, and one was against a tax increase, one for employee health insurance coverage, and one for recreation fees. Mr. David King?
Y'all forgive me, I've not been in a fight, so. It's hard to put twenty-eight years in three minutes, but I'll try to do the best that I can do. We started in nineteen ninety-seven with the museum, and first of all, I don't feel like we're an outside agency, really. And mainly, the Claude Moore Museum is what is so important in this. Ms. Moore contacted me. This museum that Mr. Claude Moore had was outstanding, just priceless. She contacted me, had to go out and talk to her. I went out and sat one afternoon with her. She showed me these exhibits that she had, and she says, "I want to donate these to Sampson County." Duplin County is wanting them, but Claude wanted them to stay here in Sampson County. So I knew there was no way that I had any funds at all. I was working at the museum voluntarily, didn't have any dime to buy hardly anything at all. And so, I contacted Mr. Jerry Hobbs. I told him what was there, that Sampson County was going to lose it if we didn't do anything. So he took the commissioners out to Mr. Moore and looked at it, and they decided to come up with the funding to move it. But they didn't have a place other than the museum's grounds where we had to put it. So they moved it, and they accepted it, and Sampson County was going to look after it. And I've got letters here that were sent to Mr. Jerry Hobbs about the artifacts in the museum, lending them to Duplin County. Didn't come to me at the museum, it came to Mr. Jerry Hobbs, because everybody was under the understanding that Sampson County was going to look after this precious museum. And a lot of people still don't even know that. But there's the letter right there that you can read. I will give you a little bit more information if I can, and I don't want to run out of time. So many people has worked for this museum. You take Don Butler. Don Butler helped with the log cabin roofing, North Carolina Grange and Westbrook worked together for the agriculture building. Clark Woodin donated a store. Not only did he donate it, he paid to have it moved. When he moved it there, he painted it, and he still keeps the upkeep on it. Wellman Oil Company, gas pumps for the store that goes in front of it. Sampson County Sports Club. All of you know about the sports club. The sports club, all the athletes in this whole county, their pictures are in there, any of them that was outstanding. Claude Moore Museum, Webb Brown, he and his family at the Bunning House. We took this Bunning House totally apart that Billy Sutton donated to the museum. We took it totally apart, numbered it, brought it to the museum, and put it back together. The Law Enforcement Association. Sixty thousand dollars, we sold our association building and donated it all to the museum to build that law enforcement building that's there. Cost the county nothing. Fire, Roseburg furnished a Ford, forty-six Ford fire truck. The military building, Ann Knowles worked so hard in this county. Guys, I just.
Stephanie, I believe the timer's still on two minutes, is it not? Or is it on three minutes?
It's on three.
It's on three. Okay. That just seemed to go quick.
Goes mighty fast, folks. I've got so much that I'd like to say, and didn't even recognize so many people, especially what I was going to show you about the museum by the Highway Patrol in Raleigh. I'm on that board. They brought their architects to Sampson County to show them our museum, they had heard so much about it. Here's the pictures of it. I don't mean to go over, folks, but y'all need to know this.
Yeah, we do. Thank you.
Now, they came here and they designed this building that's built in Raleigh, because it's an auditorium for the Highway Patrol and the state, and they got bottom portion of this building is going to be the Highway Patrol's Hall of History. It's got twenty-seven old Highway Patrol cars. You should see it. If you ever get it built, you get to come and see it. But, folks, thank you for the time so much. I would like you to see this, you can look at it. But they went through our museum to see how it was set up, the exhibits were set up. They even went down to our place, because Jeanne and I have a museum at home. They went through that, but they spent over half a day here looking, and was extremely impressed with what we have here and how it was set up.
Thank you, folks.
Good evening.
I want to speak a little bit and address the animal shelter. I watched the last budget meeting you had on the animal shelter. I understand the cuts, but I was a little brokenhearted by some of the comments. But I also heard some of the questions, and so I'm hoping that I'll be able to answer some of those. One cat, one female cat can have five litters of kittens in one year, five to seven kittens in each litter. So let's just say they have five. That's thirty-five kittens that in four to five months are going to turn around and rebreed. We have spayed eighty female cats this year. So by spaying eighty female cats, we have stopped two thousand eight hundred kittens from going out into our population. On and on and on. So the need for spaying and neutering needs to be there at the shelter. There's too many irresponsible pet owners. Can we educate them, I think was one of the questions? I'd be glad to offer my time to hold classes to educate them. Do I think that it would work? I don't, because they're irresponsible. One of the questions that was raised was, how can we have more revenue coming into the shelter? I have suggestions. Twenty-five dollar citation if your animal doesn't have a rabies shot by the time they're four months old, because it's state law required. We do nothing. You could have a five dollar pet licensing fee if you own a pet. Twenty-five dollars if it's a not spayed or neutered pet. That would bring revenue into our shelter. Necligent citations. If an animal control officer goes out there and the dog's tied up to a tree, and you can count every bone in its body, and it's obvious that it's negligent, why can't they write them a hundred and fifty or two hundred dollar ticket right then? That brings revenue into our shelter, and it also sends a message to irresponsible pet owners that we're not going to tolerate it anymore. We spent over a half a million dollars from a state grant to update our shelter so we can save more animals. So leaning toward euthanasia after three days, that's not an option for someone who has spent thirty-two years saving them. They can't all be saved. I'm very realistic when it comes to that. Some of them, they come in the door and have to be put down right then. Some of them, we know, when they're seventy-two hour hold is up, we have to put them down. But a mandatory, I know you didn't vote on it, but it was broached, the subject was broached, and it's very disheartening for those in the animal profession. And not to mention, it's one of the number-one suicide rates is animal profession and mental breakdowns across the nation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
She said everything I wanted to say.
Okay. Mr. Rose?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. I'm Joel Rose, the Director of the Sampson County History Museum. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight with Davy King and others, other board members who are supporters of the museum. If you're here for the museum, can you raise your hand? Good show. Thank you. We understand this is a challenging budget year for the county, and we appreciate the work that goes into the balancing of the budget across all your departments. That's why we were stunned to learn that our funding was going to be cut to twenty thousand dollars, which is a drastic reduction. Mr. Hudson explained that the museum is considered nonessential, but I want to stress, we are essential, both culturally and economically to our county. We've got eleven buildings to maintain, and our utility costs alone exceed twenty thousand dollars. A cut of this size would jeopardize basic operations and likely eliminate one or both of our part-time positions. Ruthie Pope and I share staffing, and we keep the museum open every Saturday year round, but she works three days a week, I work four, and we don't have any benefits. Volunteers cannot simply sustain a facility of this size. Here's why the museum matters. We are the only year-round tourist destination in this county, and admission is free. Hundreds, hundreds visit us annually, with about eighty percent coming from outside of Clinton. Our events or educational programs, they bring in tourism dollars and support local businesses. Just in recent weeks, we welcomed two different school groups totaling over a hundred children. We're a key to the county's identity. Our presence helps Sampson with neighboring commands, I'm sorry. Our presence helps Sampson compete with neighboring communities and counties by investing in culture and tourism. Cutting us to twenty thousand isn't just a reduction, it's a potential shutdown. But we're not just here to ask for money, we're here to work together. We're willing to explore partnerships, services, grants, to ease the burden on the county while keeping the museum open. We respectfully ask for consideration, even for partial restoration, closer to last year's sixty thousand dollars. It would make a big difference. Thank you again for your leadership and for your time. We're proud to serve Sampson County, and we hope to continue to serve us together.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Ms. Kay Rayner?
Good evening, Board of Commissioners and interim manager, Mr. Hudson. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight on behalf of the Sampson County History Museum. I am the President of the Museum Board, and I have been nervous about speaking, I have been nervous about the budget, I have been ill. Ask my husband if you don't believe that, but the museum has, I'm passionate about. Joel, Joel has laid it all out, but I want to thank the county for your past support of the museum, over two decades of support. I want to thank each one of you on the current board for responding to the letters that you have received, the emails you have received from our supporters, the replies that we have received. And I personally want to thank Commissioner Crumpler for the transparency, the honesty in replying for all of you, I'm sure. I want to thank the supporters here here tonight. That's just a small number of supporters. I want to thank all of the supporters who wrote letters of support of how important the history museum is. So after you've read all of your emails, you've read all of your letters, you've listened to people, what they say about the museum, would like for you to take all of that into consideration and see if you can move up some from the proposed budget. And I said, my husband told me to stay away from tax talk, but we pay city and county taxes. That's our duty as a citizen. I grumble, most everybody in this room probably grumbles, but you know what? We could not have the services that we have in Sampson County, nor, I happen to live in the city of Clinton, without that. So whatever this board decides, my husband and myself, we will be abiding citizens. Thank you for all you do for Sampson County and for the Sampson County History Museum. And thank you for visiting us also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Grayzek?
Hi, it's Bob Grayzek, 2556 Greensbridge Road, Parkersburg, North Carolina. I just want to thank Mr. Hudson for bringing transparency to this county. Last year, it was two commissioners and the county manager in a room deciding what the budget is for our county. This year, our board and the county manager showed us that the budget could have been ninety-four million dollars. That's what was asked for. Isn't that what we provide? But when you whittled it down, you looked at the different cuts that were made. Our board has integrity. By cutting some of these places, some of these departments, service to our county, if it weren't for you all, we would be paying forty, ninety-four million dollars in Sampson County for our taxes, for our county to survive. During the budget process, everything was laid out, everything was explained. The book that you guys walked around with probably had to shift from one arm to the other because it was so heavy. But Mr. Hudson made a valid point on making the budget a two-year budget and adding to it. But I would like to suggest that anybody making above the average medium income in Sampson County next year not get the two percent raise and the five hundred dollars. The average income in Sampson County is fifty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars in two thousand twenty-four. So if next year, the valuable employees that work for the county are the lower employees, they should be the ones getting the two percent COLA raise. They should be the ones getting the extra five hundred dollars in their salary to boost them up, because they are working hard for our county. Anybody making above a certain amount, let's say sixty thousand dollars or seventy-five thousand dollars, should not get that COLA. Also, we want to train these employees to be better employees for our county. They should be the ones getting the travel, not the directors. They should be involved with traveling to get better, to move up in the county. They should be the ones going to these conferences. The lower-end employees are our most valuable asset in the county, and we should promote them with the pay and the travel so that they get that better education for our county. Thank you very much, and thanks for the job you guys have done with this budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Dwight Williams?
Dwight Williams, 2427 Roanoke Road, Clinton. I want to apologize to the board and to the county manager and to the residents in this room. I came here at the last meeting, and I spoke against the tax increase, and I asked that the cuts just be made where they had to be made, and that, you know, my last request was to leave the contingency reserve fund alone. Obviously, obviously, I was wrong. Overwhelming support for this budget, overwhelming support also for the tax increase. What I am reminded of, truthfully, is the old song back in the country western days that, "Everybody wants to go to heaven, but nobody wants to die." Everybody wants the county's services. They come forward and ask for the county's services, but nobody wants to pay the bill. Well, if we want the services, we're going to have to pay for it. We started out at ninety-four million dollars. It's been whittled down, yes, fine, but we've still got expected expenses on the table that have not yet been addressed. One of those in particular is a new school. Four million dollars earmarked for it, four million dollars will not pay for it. There will be additional revenues that have to come up to do that. So it just occurs to me that if I'm that far on the wrong side of the equation, that we might as well go ahead and go back to table one and increase the county tax rate by sixteen cents. So that would leave the reserve fund alone and fix the budget. But if you're going to look a little further down the road, you might as well say, if we're going to take care of the school, that'd probably take another four cents and just go ahead and increase it about to twenty, twenty cents on top of our sixty-two. So if we're going to ask for the services, if we're going to ask for everything we want, the bill's coming due, folks. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rose.
Mr. Jackson?
I've been to these budget hearings, and I've been told and told the whole year that last year's taxes was revenue neutral. My taxes went up last year, and everybody I talked to's taxes is going to, and it looks like they're going to go up again this year. So is a tax increase on this property tax, especially me, I'm on a fixed income, I'm going to soon be out of money. So our issue just has to foreclose on me. But is that to be expected in my future years? A tax increase every year, every year? And some of you have, us up there, have ran on the platform, I'm not going to vote for a tax increase. Are we or ain't we? Question. Answers in your hands. But my taxes went up last year, and it looks like they're going to go up this year. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all we have signed up.
Okay. At this time, I'll open another public hearing.
You need to close that hearing first, and then open the next one.
We're going to close the public hearing on the budget at this time. I don't need a motion, sir? You just close it.
No, you can just close it. You don't need a motion.
I'm just bessin' you. We're going to close the public hearing at this time. Trying to make a little light today, okay? I'm sorry. All right, now, we're going to open up another public hearing for economic development. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we can move on, and we'll close the public hearing for economic development. It is closed. Do I have, before we recess to reconvene at a later date, we're going to take everything we've heard of that, and we're going to assess it, and we'll go back, and we're going to look at everything that we talked about. I'm going to say one thing real quick about it, and I'll turn it over to the other ones. I hope you understand that nothing has been taken lightly in this budget. Nothing has been, we didn't want to hide anything, and I don't think we have. We've tried to be as open as possible, and we want you all to understand that we do not take it lightly. We do not take our jobs lightly, because the budget, as we see it and as we move forward, will also affect us and who we are as citizens also. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the rest of them, see if they have anything to say before we close out the comments for tonight.
Mr. Rose? Mr. Chairman, I have a statement I'd like to read, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
My fellow commissioners and members of the public, I want to take a moment to address the comments I made during our recent budget workshop regarding the animal shelter. My words were poorly chosen and did not reflect the compassion, thoughtfulness, or respect that this issue and the people involved deserve. I deeply regret the way I frame my remarks and the concerns they have caused to our citizens, our shelter staff, and the broader rescue community. Let me be absolutely clear, the board has not adopted, proposed, or considered a policy to mandate euthanasia after a three-day hold period, and I sincerely apologize for the confusion and pain my words created. I have always supported physical responsibility, and during a difficult budget season, I asked questions aimed at understanding cost pressures across all departments. In doing so, I focused too narrowly on numbers and failed to recognize the emotional and ethical significance of animal welfare. That was a mistake, and I take full responsibility for it. Our shelter staff, led by Ms. Anna Ellis, do exceptional work under difficult circumstances, and I am grateful for their professionalism and their dedication to saving animal lives. Moving forward, I will do better, and I remain committed to ensuring that every dollar we spend as a county is spent wisely. But I also recognize that some investments like responsible animal care and public safety must be handled with care and foresight. That includes support for low-cost spay and neuter programs, education around responsible pet ownership, and partnerships that reduce the long-term strain on our shelter system. I appreciate the grace many of you have shown me over the past week, and I hope we can move forward together in a spirit of shared compassion, transparency, and physical responsibility. And on a side note, I would just like to say that as commissioners, we receive a lot of noise in both directions, and sometimes that kind of muddies the waters, so I apologize. Thank you.
First off, I'd like to point out, Mr. Hudson, I realize things like the History Museum, animal shelter, parks and recreation, things like that are perceived by some as low-hanging fruits. They're not mandated services by the state, but they are necessary services by community standard. Mr. Hudson was given a charge to come in and to prioritize, identify things, potential things, and he presented us with a budget. A lot of it statistically looked bad, but it was not his decision to make the tough decisions. He offered recommendations. He offered to us as possibilities statistically of where we could save money and different things of that nature. Nothing personal, nothing intended to harm anyone intentionally. Mr. Hudson then provided us with that document, and we're the five responsible for putting the human part of it into effect. And we're a value, you know, we've taken all the comments into account. I think you've touched a lot of hearts in the comments that you've made tonight, and I appreciate your feedback and your input, and I hope moving forward, we can, we can find some type of way to work through this so that we have a mutual solution to the problems that we face as a county. Like I said, Mr. Hudson made some, some tough choices, but his job, he did what he was asked to do, to statistically find those things. That's a manager's job. When it comes down to identifying how it's going to impact the county, it falls back to us. We're the ones who ran, we're the ones who said we'd make the hard decisions when nobody else wanted to. Leads me to another thing. When I originally ran, I did run on the promise of trying to not have any new taxes and that I would vote against no taxes if at all possible. At the time, and based on the circumstances in the county budget, I thought it would be possible to work through some cuts, that there wouldn't be any budget cuts. But things transpired after that. The ball field changed, circumstances changed. I was also raised to be a man of humility and admit when I made a mistake. Maybe I spoke too brashly in making a comment like that, that I would never do that. And I do apologize, and I eat my words. But I'd rather eat my words than punish the people of Sampson County. I would rather eat my words than cut to the bone services that are necessary and needed by the county. Now, I'm not saying jump out and fund everything that jumps up, no. I still believe in physical responsibility, but at the same time, I also believe in responsibility to the citizens of this county. What's necessary in Garland may not be necessary in Newton Grove and vice versa. I represent a very unique geographic area of Sampson County, to say the least, and I hear it from everybody, different ends. And as Mr. Crumpler's alluded to, you have different people talking into your ear. Nobody wants a tax increase. Nobody does. But at the same time, as responsible adults, we know we have to make hard decisions that are always going to be popular. You know, when you look back at the Bible, how many hard decisions were made there that were not popular at the time? As we move forward, the only thing that I can promise you is that I'll do what's financially sound for the county. And Mr. Williams addressed something that we really haven't talked about, and we're going to have to have more conversation as a board with the public. And those are some other needs that are unfunded. And we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be creative in the way we address it, and it's not, it's going to be a Sampson County issue. We're going to have to have our legislative delegation involved, and we're going to have to seek grant funding in a lot of other areas, and we're aware of that. And we're going to look, and we're going to work towards that. But please rest assured that nobody on this board rested easy this weekend or the past week with the information that was presented to us in a lot of areas last week. I wish I had a magic wand, we could win the lottery and solve everybody's problems, but reality sits in, and that's not going to happen. But we have people in this county who've stepped up to the plate. We have people that understand, and I think the biggest thing with the transparency that we have is if we put the facts out there, we give you the information, you can give us better feedback. And I thank you for being here tonight, showing your concern and expressing your concerns. And I ask you continue to pray for this county as we move forward.
Thank you, sir.
Just to speak on where we're at and what we're doing, I truly want to thank Mr. Hudson for coming in, helping us. We, as a board, have seen ourselves as not involved as much. But this year, I could see that we have grown ourselves. And in that growing part, it comes to this day. But Sampson County would be nothing without each one of you with your comments. I think this year proves that we're looking towards working together. We need your voice, and not that we're going to all make the right things to do and for everybody. There's some things that might have to change. And I'm just thankful for what each of you have said, but if we look at our future, how do we have the things that we have? And how do we go forward? That's what we got to work on. Even though if some things go up, it's going to matter that all of us going to have to be a part of that. I think each one in this room loves Sampson County. I believe that with my heart. And so if we do, we as this board want to make the best for Sampson County, even though it may not look like it. We want the best. And so what we do is get together our minds, our hearts, to make some decisions. I like the statement of where our board balance should be or could have been, but now it's at a point where we could be, or get to more efficiency. And that's what all of us need to do. How, how do we get more efficiency going forward? And that's a question I wish we could have answered right away. But we have to get our minds, our hearts. But when you see us doing things, I love your comments because they make us grow better. They make us work harder, and that's what we're here for, to make Sampson County better. And, and your thoughts, your ideas help us to move forward. But then, as voting us in, we got to look at what's best for all of us. One of the things we look at, everybody want a piece of the pie, but everybody can have the large piece of the pie. We're all in that together. And when we make these decisions, it's for the betterment of Sampson County. But I truly want to thank you, each one of you, that brought your comments tonight. And I truly thank God for this board working together. I have to say with my heart that each one of us, in our minds and our hearts, want to make things better for each of us. And I, I love working with each one of them, and I want to thank you again for what you've done. But when it comes to taxes and all of that, our buildings, our future, believe me, we want to make sure that each of your statements, when we get together, is heard. That's what we want to do. Each one of you have said something tonight to make us move the needle. Now we have to move at more efficiency together. So thank you for all you've said. Thank you for pushing us in the right direction to what we're going to do and need to do. Thank you.
I want to say good evening to everyone, and I really do thank you for coming and making your comments, because if you had not come and made comments, we would not know what you were thinking. But now we know what you were thinking, and that's going to help. When I came on the Commissioners Board, I came on here to give back to a county that had given me so much. And by doing that, I know that I can't do you wrong by doing that. I've got to do what's right by each and every one of you, and that's what my intent is to do. Everybody's not in the same position financially, and to raise taxes would hurt other people. And some people, it may not hurt, but we've got to analyze and do the best that we can do to get it right, because we're going to do it for you. We doing it for you, not for ourselves, but for you. We may benefit some from it because we live in this county too. I believe that Sampson County is the best county in North Carolina. I believe it with all of my heart. And with all of us working together, we can make that dream come true. We can do it. But without your help, we can't do it. So tonight, we're petitioning you to let us know when we're stepping off the deep end. Let us know when you need our help for anything, because that's what we're here for. We're here to make Sampson County great, and I know with your help, it will be great. I'm going to keep on pushing for this county, and I'm going to keep on pushing for you because that's what's important. You make up this county, not us. You make it up. You make this county up, and it's what you decide that you want to see happen is what will happen. You know, we can't make that decision for you. And tonight, you have expressed that to us of what you want, what you want to see happening, and we're going to work toward it. It may not get to the point of everybody being satisfied. It may not get there. I can't promise you that it will, but I can promise you this, whatever's right is what will be done. I thank you for your time.
All hearts and minds, and everybody good?
Mr. McLean, may I say something?
I would say, yes. Yeah, come on.
I just wanted to take the time, I'm the director at the animal shelter, and I wanted to take the time and to tell Mr. Crumpler that I appreciate you reaching out to me today for us to have a conversation. You know, it always says that weak leaders blame others for their mistakes, but true leaders are humble enough to admit their mistakes. Last meeting was a tough one, but I honestly do appreciate you, and I, and I want to reiterate, like Mr. Crumpler said, we are not going to a 72-hour euthanasia. We're going to continue doing what we're doing. I appreciate the support of the board, and I do appreciate you for coming to me and having a conversation with me this afternoon.
Thank you. Thank you for having the conversation with me.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. I just hope that that's an example that shows you what kind of board this is. We're very open. We want to be receptive to your concerns, but most of all, I want to thank you for what you did tonight. But also, I'm not going to miss the opportunity to thank the employees of this county and what I know they have been doing and the hard work that they've been doing, and I really appreciate what you guys have done, because you've made our job somewhat easier, I'll admit, because where we started and where we're at now, you've really stepped up, and I applaud you tonight publicly. Thank you for what I've done. All right, I know y'all are tired, some people hadn't eaten, so we're going to move forward, and we're going to recess this meeting to Wednesday, June 18th at 1:00 a.m., or 1:00 p.m., excuse me. I'm not going to be here at 1:00 a.m. I think we have a typo. That won't own me. I'm just reading what's on the paper. I'm sorry, y'all. I'm walking through that right now, p.m. I don't need to vote for recess, do I? Just go to recess. So we are at recess. Y'all have a great night. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I've changed my...